So, good evening and welcome to the August 21st Select Board meeting in the Town Room at Town Hall. We have a fairly abbreviated menu of items tonight. We will go into executive session a little bit later, but I do want to check with my colleagues and see if there's any announcements or agenda items that we need to address first. Seeing none, then I think we'll head into where we're at. I don't see anyone here for public comment, so I think we'll start with our first item that we know we need to do, and that will be a proclamation of September as Hunger Action Month. And I believe we have a guest here to tell us about the proclamation and a little bit about the circumstances.
Since my name is there, I think I can.
Please do. Thank you.
So, I think this is our first Hunger Month proclamation that we've done, and Ms. Brubaker had invited me to meet with her, which we did, and we talked about this, and she had some examples from some other communities, and then reworked this for Amherst, and I'm kind of excited that we're doing this, and she's going to tell us the thinking behind it, and then when you're ready, Mr. Slaughter, we can actually read the proclamation, but why don't you take it away?
All right. I'm Cynthia Brubaker, and representing the League of Women Voters of Amherst. To bring you a proclamation, I think it went out in your packets, and you want me to read this after the statement. This month is National Recognition of Hunger and Food Insecurity, and being recognized throughout the country and also right here in our own community. Towns and cities across the United States have passed similar resolutions and proclamations this summer. In the spring of 2017, the League of Women Voters joined with the Amherst Survival Center to present a community program which was entitled "A Look at Threats to the Safety Net." Following this program, several of us who were involved met and talked about how to move this from just informational to action. We met with a group of organizations and joined together, which was a wonderful example of community collaboration. Those organizations included the League Women Voters, Amherst Survival Center, the Food Bank of Western Mass, the Amherst Health Department, and ION, which stands for the Interfaith Opportunities Network here in Amherst. Our goal was to reach out to the residents of the Amherst area and encourage them as organizations, faith groups, and individuals to take action to meet food needs of people here in our own community. In particular, the League of Women Voters and the interest that we have in this has to do with the proposed federal budget, which is rather, as it's proposed, is rather draconian in the cuts that are going to be recommended in programs like WIC, which is Women, Infants, and Children Food Program, SNAP, Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, which was food stamps, Meals on Wheels, and school lunch and breakfast programs. They could all suffer, affecting those who are the most vulnerable, young, the poor, and the elderly. So as you know, all of you know, right here in Amherst, we experience a large amount of food insecurity. With an estimated 30% of our kids in public school on free and reduced lunch, we know that there are families struggling to provide adequate food right here in this community. We all need to be reminded that food is one of our basic human needs, and we ask that you, our Select Board, make this a public acknowledgement and recognition so that we can continue to be vigilant in addressing the human needs of those here in Amherst. And I have the proclamation. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of grave concern in the United States, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and in Amherst community, and whereas the town of Amherst is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the needs to combat hunger in every part of the community and to provide resources accessible to those in need, and whereas the town of Amherst is committed to working with a variety of organizations about the role and importance of food distribution in addressing the food needs in our community. These groups include, but are not limited to, the Food Bank of Western Massachusetts, the Amherst Survival Center, Not Bread Alone, area churches, synagogues, and mosques, the Senior Center, UMass Meals on Wheels, and the Amherst Regional Public Schools. And whereas the Food Bank of Western Massachusetts distributed 10 million pounds of food last year in Western Massachusetts, and the Survival Center in Amherst served over 17,000 free lunches during the past year to residents of this area, and whereas almost 32% of Amherst elementary school children are on free and reduced lunch, now therefore be it resolved that the Select Board of the Town of Amherst hereby proclaim September 2017 Hunger Action Month and bring this to the attention of the residents of Amherst.
Are there questions or comments? Yes.
I just wanted to thank you for bringing this forward in a format that shows very directly our local impact, so thank you for describing that in detail.
I realized in having you read it, that's probably the text you submitted to Ms. Pupple in the manager's office. She turned it into a proclamation, and I just would like to give you this because there were just a few prepositions and things that changed.
Oh, good.
Slightly. I think you'll still agree, but you might as well have a copy because there were a couple words.
Great. Thank you.
Pretty much.
That's great. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Third into 30%.
So, I would be happy to make that motion, as long as Ms. Brubaker is happy to accept those minor word changes. So I move to proclaim September 2017 as Hunger Action Month and to bring this to the attention of the residents of Amherst.
Do you have a second? Yes.
I could second, but then I have a question.
Okay. We'll take it as a second.
Second and discuss.
So the motion's a little weird, and bring this to the attention of the residents of Amherst. What? We don't do that. We sign things, and then Ms. Pupple puts them up on the website. We do have variations on this language. This one's perhaps a little more bald than some others in terms of just saying "and bring this to the attention."
We just did that by having a proclamation at a meeting on TV.
I'd just as soon take off and to bring this to the attention of the residents of Amherst, just because we're not going to do any, I mean, we think it's great, and it's going to go on the website if Ms. Pupple continues to do that, but I'm not sure what else we would do, and I don't want to imply that we're holding an event or anything.
The mover would consider that a friendly amendment. It doesn't really matter.
Change the motion and the proclamation?
No, just after the word, after Hunger Action Month in the motion, she put a period across the list.
Yeah. No, the proclamation's great. By signing the proclamation, we have done the action.
And the proclamation talks about bringing attention to the issue, which is great.
Was there other discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Jaws, I didn't read my motion sheet.
And that would be unanimous.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for doing that. It's really appreciated.
I believe that's in our signature folder, but we'll discuss that in a bit. Thank you very much.
Sure, Mr. Merzak wants to help draw attention to it.
So I think the next thing we'll do here, just for sake of expediency, is go to our Licenses, Public Way of Meeting Parking Reservation section, and we have two, I think, licenses. I think one is a license and one is a modification of existing license, so I would suggest if we could just knock those out, because I think the other conversations are going to be longer and more involved, and so if we could just take care of those real quick, I think we could get to the meat of the matter, as they say. So if someone would...
I just have a question.
Yes, please.
So it looks like one that we just did last week is coming back for a modification.
That's correct.
Because...
Hours presented on the application did not match what he actually wanted, so we have to...
Wondering. Okay. That solves that mystery.
Yes, exactly. We had noted it seemed unusual, but it seems less unusual now if we...
Brewer, do you want to read them?
I would be happy to read the top of the campus one.
Okay.
So, "I move to approve the application of Top of the Campus Inc. for a special license to serve wine and malt beverages at a reception to be held at UMass Amherst in room E 470 of South College on August 29, 2017, from 2:30 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Kimberly McAllister, Director."
Do you have a second?
Second, yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And so we have another, the modification.
I can do that because I'm here for the first one. "I move to approve a change in hours for the secondhand sales license of Robert L. Chestnut doing business as Catch My Thrift, 11 East Pleasant Street, from Thursday to Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., to Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Sundays, 12:00 to 5:00 p.m., Robert L. Chestnut owner." I think there should be an "and" before the word "to," I mean, someplace in here.
From Thursday to Sunday.
And, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
The "from" is what you voted last time. The "to" is what the new, the change is.
Oh, okay.
So she thought...
From that to that.
Right.
I was saying "from" where the hours from, okay.
So what you voted last week was the...
So what I read is okay.
Thursday to Sunday, 10:00 to 5:00.
So the words are right, but my emphasis in reading it. Got it.
All right. So in short, Thursday to Sunday, 10:00 to 5:00 is what we voted last week, seeking to change it to Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and on Sundays from 12:00 to 5:00.
Well, second, and then I have a question.
So just from last, whenever we did this, it was last time or the time before. The 14th, when you weren't here, just, we were kind of mulling over, like, well, I didn't ask for more hours, and he doesn't have to be open then, but he would have that flexibility, so like, now I get it.
Yes.
So my questions, being that I wasn't here, and no, I did not watch the tape, and no, I have no intention of doing so, are two. One is that I would presume, like with all other licenses, that just as the police, whereas the police chief was involved in approving it last time, it was contingent, they would not have actually, we don't say it's contingent, what we know is that the office just doesn't release the actual license until the police chief. I assume the police chief will be notified of these change in hours, rather than just we approved it one way and then we don't show it to the chief of police again. I presume that the chief does see it again, so I just wanted to verify that. And then after we vote, I have a completely different question about secondhand licenses, but I don't want it to muddy the situation with this group.
So is there further discussion on this particular motion?
No, this one's already secondhand.
All right. In that case, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. And so your other question about secondhand licenses?
My other question is, as I have brought up more quietly in the past, but will now just bring up publicly, is that I would like us to have staff look into why the hospice shop does not have a secondhand license, because it's my understanding that the reason for secondhand licenses has to do with, at least back in the olden days, was because of them not acting as fences for stolen goods, and that way the police knew about them and knew they could go and talk to them about materials that might be brought in. And I believe that, just for consistency's sake, I don't know of a reason why they don't have one, and if we could get that settled before it's time for license renewal, it would be nice to have them just be part of the hospice shop that's next to what used to be Hanger, and...
Down near the bicycle, ununiversity drive.
What used to be the Daily Hampshire Gazette before your time, actually.
Or between your times.
Yes, between your times.
All right. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
So next up is our action discussion items. First up is our Town Manager Performance Evaluation Review, Revisions of Composite Evaluation Draft Summary. I sent out earlier today, and hopefully this got to the website. I didn't check to make sure it had, but certainly there's hopefully a printed copy with you tonight. I had put draft back on it until we finish our conversation this evening, and page numbers and a few other things, but mostly what I did was any of those more substantial sort of edits that we were wanting, I had put in highlights, so it was a little easier to spot, the typographical sort of things and the things of that nature. I just made those changes without highlighting them, so I was hoping if either of you had any other comments relative to those or any other wordsmithing we wanted to do relative to this, and if you haven't had a moment to read it, I'll, there's not so much that you couldn't read now, so if you'd like to take a moment.
Would you hand that to him? I think when a copy and paste happened, that "the" got added in the bullet points, and I don't know why.
Let's see.
Oh. It's really minor, but it makes it look different than the other documents, and I don't know why it would look different than the other documents.
Right.
Could have a "the," but then they would all need a "the."
It's a stray "the."
It's a stray "the."
Which we can edit out.
Inserted itself into the bullet points.
Yeah. Hand that back to her.
Mr. Slaughter, thank you for putting it in yellow. I did read this this afternoon, and it was really better than I kind of tracked changes because then the document was cleaned up and it made it really easy, and I thought on my read-through, it did reflect the discussion we had last week in that you incorporated those comments very seamlessly, so that was my overall.
I agree.
Okay. Fantastic.
I think it's good to go.
So then I will, after our meeting tonight or early tomorrow, I will take out the highlights, take the word "draft" off.
Get rid of the errant "the."
Get rid of the extra "the," and we'll make it the formal summary for Mr. Bachmann for his proposal.
Is there any action board hesitation?
You know, I was just thinking that, you know...
We could make a motion.
We could. We don't have one on our sheet, but I think, do we want to formally adopt the...
Why don't we just, on the fly, make up a motion?
The summary.
I will try.
All right.
That we adopt or approve, pick your, whatever, which one you prefer, the FY '17 Town Manager Performance Evaluation dated August 21, 2017.
Second.
Is there further discussion?
Is there approve or adopt, which you prefer?
What do you want?
Adopt.
Please adopt.
We don't approve. Adopt.
Adopt or accept, not really approve. I don't know.
Go with adopt.
I think we could argue any of them. One sounds good, because we'll do it again next time.
Why don't we say... Mr. Slaughter, help, let's just pick a word.
I'm leaning toward adopt.
Adopt.
All right.
So there was a motion and a second. Any other discussion besides the word that we used to take ownership of this?
I don't think we've done this in the past, but it does seem like a sense of a reasonably sensible thing to do, to just show that, yep, it's done, so...
There's no harm in doing it either.
No.
Right. Exactly.
It's a nice way of ending it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. So we will tidy up the loose ends and get that formally in the place. So the next piece of work we have before our bigger piece is a bit of discussion potential about fiscal year '18 goals. We're continuing on with those, I believe, in our packet last time and hopefully this time as well. Ms. Pupple had incorporated a couple of comments that were made at the meeting of the 14th, I want to say.
Not in the packet.
It's not in the packet. It would be in last time's packet, so I don't know if anyone has that with them or not.
Or two times ago, was it?
But I did, I did receive from Mr. Steinberg some comments that he had...
That's right. He was going to send you his.
Which I have not read. I just have them safely tucked away. But if, ah, here they are. But if anyone had anything else that they wanted to mention at this time around goals or if we would like, we can, I mean, we, you know, it's our own deadline, quite frankly, so given that there are just the three of us here tonight, we can certainly, if there are things that you want to mention, we can make note of, and then we'll have this conversation continue, I think, is my guess, but yes.
So I had, I had two questions. One was in associate, I appreciate the additions that were made, and Item Six on Page Two is Assess the Need for Town Involvement in Fort River School Feasibility Study. It's not feeling like the right phrasing that we're looking for there.
Yeah, that was...
We, I figured that was a, you know, put a placeholder there, and...
It definitely was.
And let's try, because I think what we're trying to do, I don't know what your conversation was, but I think what we're trying to do is show that the town is going to be involved in Fort River Feasibility Study, and the questions are around the resources, like the finance people that might need to be involved, the buildings and facilities people, and also any select board discussion or policymaking associated with it, as, you know, like input as well.
Right. I think if...
I think that, I think that was mine, and I think when we were generating these, and I don't have that, I didn't bring the document, but we were really calling them thought bubbles because, and so it wasn't, we were throwing out ideas, but it got incorporated from, I think, Mr. Zomack's notes into the modified document, and my sentiment in putting that out and having attended the first listening session on this was that there were opportunities that the town, and, you know, we're all the town, but that other, you know, not understanding the role of the school committee in this, but that the other resources of the town could, could and should, that's not the wording for the thing, but come to bear to help assist in defining the scope of that project and helping to get the requests for proposal or requests for proposals out and would work, could work cooperatively with the school board and the superintendent in, you know, in assisting in that being a more focused process.
I think the other piece of, the other note that I think Mr. Steinberg made in conjunction with that was just making sure there's a coordination of effort regarding the fact that this is a large capital project, and there are others in the pipeline that we want to, you know, we want to make sure that that...
It impacts, yeah.
You know, how those interplay with each other over time and how that financing works, various options available there, all are kept in the forefront of the folks' minds as they work on the school project, so they're not operating completely in isolation and that sort of thing. So that was a piece of it, too, is that coordination of effort, as well as just being resources available.
Which is different than assess the need for assistance.
Right.
Both of those things, but, yeah.
That's the intention, yes.
So I'm looking for, I guess, suggestions from Mr. Bachmann, that's the language, that incorporates the things that we're talking about here, and also to the level of while it will be a school committee creation in terms of proposals and in terms of their committee, which we should probably reference specifically here at some point, because we know that's a thing they're going to do, they're just still developing how they're going to do it, based on everything we've said, including particularly the fact of coordination with other projects and in terms of the big picture, because this is a very young school committee and a superintendent who's been in that position, has been previously an excellent assistant superintendent, and this was his project, but it wasn't so much within the context of all the other things that were going on.
You mean young in terms of experience.
Yeah. And so, exactly. Not in terms of, just in terms of years of dealing with town politics, not because they aren't all excellent at what they're doing, and I'm so grateful they're all there, whether it's the acting superintendent or the school committee members, is that it would be a mistake to, for them to work in isolation from the town manager, select board giving some advice, et cetera. Whether or not they put a select board member on the building committee is a different issue. You know, it may just be staff, it may be select board, I'm not wedded to any particular model at this point, but I was hoping, and that was one of the purposes of their open discussions, is to make sure there is coordination back and forth, that it's not working in a vacuum, so that people who don't pay attention to the school's issues on a day-to-day basis, which there are fewer of now, based on what we've recently been through, but that so that people don't kind of forget that that's happening at the same time, to make sure it's getting attention from all sides, so whether it's provide support or it's, because it's not initiating, but it's, I'm not sure what the wording is.
Like ensure the participation of town officials?
Yeah.
Is that what your goal is?
That really is what we're looking for.
I like getting the word coordination in there without...
Yeah.
I don't want to imply that we're taking over the process.
Right. Absolutely.
Well, and even, you know, if, just referring to the document, immediately preceding that is the other one that we sort of added there, and, you know, it says if charter vote passes and mark 2018, Town Manager to create transition plan. That's absolutely a placeholder sort of phrase. I mean, it's a much more, it's a much deeper, richer conversation we're going to have to have about what we're thinking about there, and we had a little bit of that conversation a week ago, but by no means got into the depth of it, but, you know, just recognizing what efforts are required to make that happen and how that will potentially prevent other things that are on the school list from happening, because there's only so many hours in the day, and, you know, it sort of switches over like, you know, a big switch being thrown, and so there's some preparation to make that happen, and so how to make that time and effort worthwhile for the manager, so he's not trying to do two jobs instead of just one. Yes.
Oh, he already has two jobs. We're just talking about three or four.
Right.
So one of the things I also think we were trying to get at when we talked about that on July 24th was that there was going to be, and I, this is one piece of it, is that there's going to need to be actual input from the actual town managers, how this will really work on the ground versus all the theories about how it'll work and what the charter commission proposal says about the transition, then there's all the actual meat and potatoes that needs to get done. But in addition, prior to that, we talked about on July 24th the fact that there was no question but that the town manager was going to be doing some sort of research to provide information as needed to help people figure things out as we're going along, whether it's for the select board's benefit, for us to better understand a position we may or may not take, or for the community to better understand, practically speaking, this is what our Town Government Act says, this is what we actually do now, because it fits within that envelope, and this is the kind of thing we're talking about over here. So we just, we weren't really sure how much he'd get sucked into doing that, but I think we expected that based on all his professional experiences, that we would be looking to him as a resource in a way that in a normal year, you know, he just does all the things he does, but we were adding on, it's like there's this extra thing happening, that people will need more understanding of how things work and how things might work.
Right. Right. Exactly. And so, and I think the purpose behind making a goal of this, I think, was twofold. One is to be explicit about the fact that it may be necessary to do that, and that also that that has a certain time commitment to it that would prevent potentially other things from getting done, and so how to, we'll have to think about how we wordsmith that to sort of frame it appropriately, because if the charter doesn't pass, then obviously that won't be necessary, and we'll have expectations that the rest of the goals get completed as written, et cetera, et cetera.
And we'd be, but we, that's six months away. We'd be halfway through the goal-setting year, so at least it's, by putting it on there explicitly, then it's something that the manager gets measured on and in a sense gets credit for. What I was going to, I was going to ask Ms. Brewer if she felt that the way that stated has added to the goals, captured what you were just talking about, as sort of the, you know, getting help with the nuts and bolts, yet the things that I didn't really, I should have gotten back to the goals for this meeting, but will in the future, what I'd like to do is go back through and see which goals should maybe be, if not dropped, because we've added some other ones, maybe moved down in importance where, yeah, those would be nice to do, but they're not as important as, you know, these five things, and we don't always, I don't know if we signal well enough what's more important than other things, because I think it's easy to pile on a lot of stuff, but some of it's just not humanly possible in a work week.
That notion of priority is one question. I mean, I think, you know, just having you said that, I was just thinking that perhaps within the different areas, that we may want to generally put things that are a bit more important nearer the top, and, but I don't know, I mean, we'll have to see as a committee when all of us are here to think about whether or not we want to kind of rank them a little bit. I mean, I don't think we'll be able to put them in, one is the most important, and two is the second most important, and three is, I don't think we'll get to that level of detail, but to broadly say the top three of six is generally where we want to spend more effort than the bottom three might be a valuable thing to have as a guide for the manager as he moves ahead this year. But I do think there's some revision of some existing goals or some refinement of some of them at this point to narrow them in some respects might be helpful as well, because there's aspects that are done. there's aspects that are done, and now it's this sort of next stage with some things and.
Updating, yeah.
So I think there are all of those, those kinds of edits we might undertake, yes.
And so, in thinking about all of this, right, is that if you and the town manager would work together and figure out a way of, maybe you just have like a charter, like a charter that's number five, that says something, and then it has an A and a B, like a specific transition plan will have to happen if the vote passes, but prior to that, a bunch of other stuff may well end up on his plate, because we'll all be coming and asking him questions that we wouldn't do if he was a brand-new town manager and didn't know any better. And so, and therefore, like you indicate, not everything else is going to get done. And so somehow breaking that out to make that clear. And one, you know, I gave a little pushback last time we talked about this in terms of when you weren't here, Mr. Bachmann, about prioritizing the goals and the push-pull between the five of us, and, well, how do you get everybody's goals in here, and then if you say some are more important than others, even though we all know practically speaking, you can't do everything all the time. Along those lines, I wonder if we want to include in here somehow, or rather than treating it purely as a process question, if there's a way to reflect in here, that we should be checking back on these goals more frequently, so that we can say, you know what, it totally makes sense to us, you're working on all this stuff, you're not going to get to this in the next six months. Like, who are we kidding? This doesn't even, it doesn't make sense to try and push that as the priority, this is clearly the priority. And if we had, rather than having to wait and say at the end of the year, well, of course, why not just do it like every quarter and say, not that you'd have to write a 12-page report on where that you are, but just for all of us to get a sense of which things are actually reasonably embraceable, which things have had new things come up with them or whatever. And then that would help us figure out, and then we could, we could say, oh, yeah, that makes sense totally, don't even worry about this thing.
And I think a perfect example of that is the planning for a net replacement in conformance with October 2016 Comcast contract, I think's what that's supposed to say. But anyway, you know, had we revisited these mid-year, we would have probably either reframed that a little bit, or dropped it, or changed it in some way to have it have more meaning for us, because I think, you know, that was one that I think, depending on who it was, had a much different sense of what they felt that meant. And so that's the other thing, is that we can, you know, if we're six months into the year, or three months in, and then six months, and then nine months, you know, we can articulate our definitions a bit more clearly, because we're more into the nitty-gritty of it, and we can see that, oh, this has become a much, much, much bigger thing than any of us anticipated, or other things have taken precedence that were unknown at the beginning of the year, or whatever. And so I think that's a fantastic suggestion, that we look at perhaps a quarterly review. And again, not to do a full-blown report, but just, I think, as much for our own purposes to review them, and then when we're at the six-month, you know, we'll do this, the mid-year sort of check-in with you and sort of look to that sort of feedback on where you're at on the, on the goals that you gave us last year mid-year, and then.
I mean, it's, it's not exactly a year anyway, so we might want to just take, like, pick two specific check-in times. The charter vote doesn't happen till the end of March, so that's too late, really, because then we're into other things. So maybe like a, you know, three or four months from now.
After fall town meeting.
Yeah, like, maybe like the end of December, or first of January, or like another check-in point, because I think you're right. I think the points you're pointing up, bringing up is that it's not just a thing that happens on March 25th, or whenever the election is.
Right.
There's going to be stuff in advance, there already is. So I think it's wise to sort of say, we are going to be reviewing this cooperatively on this, at this meeting and this meeting too, like to pick two dates or three dates or whatever we want to do. Because right now, I mean, when you say quarterly, it's like, you know, we're practically in September, so when do we, when does it, are we talking three months and then three months?
December, early March, or something, you figure it out. It could be a subset of the manager's report.
We could put it, lock in the dates, you know.
Whatever.
Yes.
We could even say October, because if we're getting this done in September, like end of October, as we're going into town meeting, this is what it turned out, the town meeting warrant looks like, it's been this huge effort over here instead of over here, like we hoped to. And so this is how we're shifting. And then, as time goes along, I'm thinking of it as more of an informal thing, like I said, rather than, you know, like part of the town manager's report sort of thing, rather than, you know, here's another five-page memo that I had to write to respond to this. But if there's something that really changes direction, then we could document that so that you would feel like, hey, I told you, this is what was going to happen, and we said, and you agreed, this is what was going to happen.
Better when you do it, yeah.
Because then nobody's surprised, you know, later on in the process, so.
So I think the other thing I think about is that we should pick, when we pick dates, which I think we can do when all five of us are here, and we think about it more deeply, is we also want to be cognizant of the other sort of big things that are in your calendar. You know, it's like, we're not going to pick the, whatever it is, 14th or 15th of January, because you have a budget due right then.
It makes sense to do right after that, because you've just seen the development of a budget and priorities, and you could say, well, you did this, you didn't do, you know, it'd be a good time to have that interaction.
Right, so we want to just time it so that it's not conflicting with some of those kind of milestone events that happen.
Right. So, yeah, anytime we put a new little process in place, we have to sort of iron out the kinks.
Exactly, exactly. All right, well, I think that's.
So right now, like, October and January?
Ms. Brewer, if I might, you said October, but I was thinking after the special town meeting is over in the fall, because things come up that then need to be attended to.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm not wedded to that.
Could be at the end of November.
Yeah, October seems, you know, really, we're already in September practically, so I was thinking, as soon as we, soon after finishing, whatever action, because then we'll know what actions are going to come out of that meeting.
Right, and so even though, like you said, quarterly is not really what fits, and so it makes sense, end of November, mid to end of November, and of course, there's the holidays in there. And then end of January, kind of gives us a sense of, we got through the big budget thing, in November, we found out all the things we have to do after town meeting, yeah, it does kind of fit. And then, then we will have the charter vote, and then there'll be the discussion, end of March, beginning of April.
We'll go with that one, we'll, so as far as next steps, I think, let's see, we're meeting it on the 30th.
That's a pretty big agenda.
And that's a big agenda. But what I might do between now and, not the 30th, but the following meeting, is to try to, to look through these and maybe do an edit of some, or as a sort of rough draft to turn back to people. So any new ideas or things that you want to convey to me individually about changes that you're seeing or want to see, you know, if you get time between now and.
We should really go back and look at it again.
Right, and then I'll try to sort of fold those together into a document, then we're working on a edited thing instead of a raw, from scratch wordsmithing.
So I did have one more, and I wonder if I could tell it to you now, and then you could decide if it fits as section, on page four, section five, one, G, little no, little no, I, or, I mean, I'm, you know, not wedded to this outline, obviously, it's just what it is.
Just say what section, what it's about.
It's the Community Intergovernmental Relations and Volunteer Committees, Boards and Commissioners section. So it talks about the relationships with UMass and Amherst and Hampshire Colleges and has currently A through G under there, and G is currently reporting regularly on the UMass 2015 Strategic Partnership Agreement, SPA. And so I don't know if it fits under that, or, because this is going to be one of those things that is going to be a singular time, and when it's done, it'll be done. And that thing is, is working with the schools on the discussion around the students and tax-free housing, because when that was brought up as a surprise at town meeting to the select board, that was unfortunate. And we, as a select board, have not heard since, although I was surprised to see that referenced in an evaluation as something that's been reported out to us.
That it might have started somewhere.
Hasn't. And so it's something that, again, because of the whole town-wide impact, we're not trying to control it, we understand that it's a superintendent and town manager task to work with, but to be wise, you would need our input associated with that. And to just have it sound like it's just happening off someplace without any discussion is therefore going to mean that the results are not going to be taken seriously by the community, so.
It should be explicit in the goals.
Yeah, but it's a one-time thing, because it's not something, we hope, it might be a multi-year thing, but.
I think you meant tax-exempt, not tax-free.
Did I say that? Yes, tax-exempt, sorry.
But I do, I think the way it would be in the goals initially would be one way, it may subsequently be in the goals.
Right.
Differently over time.
As it evolves.
Yeah, exactly. But I will take, I made note of that as well, and so I'm, I'll put those things together. But if there are other things you think of as you look over these, or, you know, wording changes, refinements you want, et cetera, please get them to me, and then I will try to craft them together in such a way that when we get together on September 11th, I guess would be.
September 11th, okay.
We could try to get a much, much closer to a set of goals that the manager would be, I mean, there's going to be some unsurprising changes, like, you know, manage the budget. You know, some of those kind of things are not really going to change. But there are others that we might refine a bit, and we need to, just for your own opportunity to do them, get them to you sooner rather than later. Is there anything else either of you wish to say about goals at this point?
This is really miniscule, but like, for A, and then everything's under A, I think the goals discussion should be its own line, like B, because I want to make sure I remember that this is.
Oh, yeah, I'm surprised.
And just to make sure that, that the goals really kind of jumps out, or maybe, you know, it's sort of like ongoing, continued discussion, yah, 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 but like, you really want us to do it.
Right, just on our own agenda, yeah.
Yeah, call it out.
I'm a little surprised it didn't have a B next to it, to be honest.
It's a kind of, not excusing myself, but I almost, like, I really didn't notice it.
I almost glossed over it myself. I was glad it was there, because I did want to have this conversation, but at the same time, I was like, oh, wait.
Yeah, it should be its own item, separate it from the evaluation.
So we'll try to make sure to get those things together. So, I believe we're done with that. So we have, at this point, another bit of work to do, but it is, it is an executive session, correct?
Do you want to have, just ask us if we have reports?
Oh, yes, thank you for reminding me.
Do you want to ask us?
Yeah, you do.
You spoiled from last week.
I am really kind of, you know.
I'd beat his record.
On the fast track here, right? Let's get us through the meeting. No, actually, if there are reports, both for the manager, if he has some things he wants to mention to us, or if either of you, so we'll start with member reports, we'll make the manager wait, because that's the coin I flipped in my mind for that. So if either of you have something you want to.
Go ahead.
To bring the attention of the.
Just, one thing was, in reference to our conversation that we're going to have on the 30th, and then, again, sometime later, about parking, I had told you that the Downtown Parking Working Group wasn't meeting in August, and so was asking for part of that to be postponed here. We did schedule a meeting for September 6th, and again, I think it's the 13th, whatever, two weeks, those are Wednesdays. And just to kind of give you a timeframe, I'm just checking if I have that.
Last day, thanks.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're switching from Tuesdays to Wednesdays, so that we'll be, we have those two dates set, so we know we're going to be getting back to a couple of things that were still outstanding. And I just wanted to mention today, both Ms. Brewer and myself were at the Sun Wheel at UMass to participate in a, the community, the larger community had been invited by the astronomy department at UMass to participate in the eclipse event. And, you know, we don't always give the university credit for things they do that, where they've opened up their facilities, and they had a telescope there that people could use to view the sun and the moon. So I just wanted to acknowledge, I don't know, I'm not good at this, but there were probably 400 people there.
I don't know, there were a lot.
There were a lot, and it was really nice, and all ages, and a lot of community members and people from the campus. So it was lovely to have that opportunity to view it, not, you know, just in a small, you know, in our yard, but to go where other people were viewing this, you know, momentous event. So I just wanted to mention that. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
So, a question, does that mean that, are we still looking at making, we had originally said that we were going to be voting on things we chose to vote on at the August 28th meeting associated with parking, which then got moved to August 30th, because we're not meeting the 28th. But are we still, in theory, looking at some of those things, but we may well say, oh, well, because Downtown Parking Working Group's meeting on the 6th, we're not ready to make a decision yet, but we are planning to have it still on the agenda for the 30th? Is that correct?
Yes, parking will still be on the agenda, I think it will be in a much more scaled-back version than was originally sort of part of the conversation, if you would.
I think what we're envisioning, both speaking from the, from agenda setting and from conversation with the Downtown Parking Working Group, is to have some motions ready for the 30th, where there seemed to be kind of pretty much universal agreement, so those things could move forward. And where both the select board and/or the Parking Working Group had asked staff and others for more information, those would be on hold until a future date.
Sure, that was still the plan, thank you.
I think you had missed some of that.
Yes, the day that I was gone, on the 14th, in terms of an update, so thank you. And the other thing I just wanted to mention beyond, I guess, two things. One is associated with the Marijuana Working Group. Despite the fact that people are allowed to actually have vacations, including myself and some staff, things continue to unfold with that situation, obviously. And so KP Law recently sent us some sample language, which we didn't have when we originally wrote, you know, the notice for the planning board meeting, hearing, et cetera. And so I wanted to just mention that everyone is working really hard on this, in addition to all the other things they were already doing. It's not like anything else has gone away, and suddenly they've got a whole nother set of things to do. So I wanted to acknowledge again that a lot of staff is putting time into this, myself and Ms. Kruger, and we are doing our best to get all the possible options ready for town meeting for the fall, because those deadlines are coming up before we know it. And in terms of planning board hearings for zoning issues, those are, you know, they have to get those in the pipeline, too. There may be things that we decide as we get closer, they may still stay on the warrant, but we may decide we don't need them, for whatever reason, because of the different information we keep getting as to how to interpret things. But I've been pushing hard that we include all possible things that we know about right now, because we can always say, we don't actually need that. But if we decide later we did need it, then it gets really hard to work in a special amongst the special and all that kind of jazz, in terms of trying to get our timing right before spring. So a lot of people putting in a lot of effort, and still will be seeing stuff coming through, and there will end up being a legal notice for a planning board hearing, 13th, 16th, somewhere around that, middle of September. And so people start to see that, and maybe as they're coming back from vacation, start to be paying attention to that. But we don't yet have a presentation ready, you know, a new presentation, as opposed to the wonderful updates we've been getting for the select board, but that's all being worked on. And so there's a lot going on there. And the other one I wanted to mention is associated with our alcohol policies, which is that I had said, yes, I would be happy to work on that, but I want some more detail about how we got to this thing that we already got presented. And for one reason or another, we have not been able to yet gather that information together. And, just as a little side note, it so happens, as some people know, that the treasurer had an alcohol task force, which had several hearings, and there was one in North Hampton, I went and testified, and through my wonderful affiliation with MMA, through MSA, through Hampshire County Select Boards Association, or who knows whose names dropped, on the survey monkey that I filled out, I got appointed to one of the working groups that's working with the task force. It's been an interesting experience so far, having been through one of those meetings by phone, since I was not about to drive to Boston with no right foot. And so I wasn't really, I was wondering how that was going to impact, you know, our, what we were writing, and I'm learning some stuff that we may want to include in our thing. But the particular working group I ended up on was not my ideal working group, because they did that for various reasons. And so I'm still finding out how we can effectively influence the task force as they start making decisions associated with this. And obviously, the industry has a lot of ideas about how to do things differently.
What's your working group, what's the title?
It's called Licensing Process. Turns out, all the things I actually care about are in economic development. But of course, they didn't tell us that when they gave us the titles, and we had to pick first and second choices, and they decided they didn't want all the public health people on the public health group, because they wanted to spread them out. They wanted to spread out the industry people, and trust me, there's a lot of industry people to spread out. So.
Not surprising.
It's, it's been, I mean, it's great, it's great, and it's great that the state is trying this model. It's a little different than what I'd quite predicted, but. It's a little different than what I'd quite predicted, but there are going to be four more meetings of my working group. All the working groups are going to have four to six meetings before the end of September. It's all very confidential based, so there have been hundreds of pages of testimony submitted to the task force, which they are not releasing even to members of the working group. So it's an interesting process, and I will keep you updated as I learn things that I'm allowed to talk about. But thus far, it was really just figuring out what, what is our set of questions versus another group's set of questions, and then how to influence each other's sets of questions. So it's a process thing at this point. But it's been interesting, and I will tell you more when I have more that I can feed back to them.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
I'm just, I don't want to prolong this too much, but just on the recreational marijuana internal working group we've had. We had talked also at agenda setting recently about the idea of having, soon having a presentation to the select board. Prior to actually discussing draft warrant articles, but the four or five articles that we would be probably looking at. And there was some conversation from coming, at least I understood from staff, from the zoning subcommittee and the planning board, wanting to know if the select board was thinking about intending to. Look at limiting the number of retail establishments. And there were some people in the community said, well, you know, we've never had a community conversation about that. And it, you know, it's sort of a chicken and egg, before the planning board knows all of what they're doing, they're looking to us. Are we thinking of limiting, and what would be that number? And then the community is saying, we want a chance to weigh in, because we've never really had that. And if we wait all the way till when we're reviewing warrant articles, it doesn't have that kind of spirit of hearing what, you know, what people are thinking or wanting. And us to start tossing around where we're going, we just wait for the, you know, even if it is zoning, it's not just a zoning decision. So some way to kind of front load some of, one of our meetings where we devote some time to getting updated about the actions we will be taking before we even take positions on warrant articles. I can't remember, because I know you missed one of the marijuana meetings, if you, you know, if you were privy to that or not.
No, and because those meetings aren't required to follow up in meeting law, and so we don't have copious minutes associated with them, but.
I could have updated.
And, but you just did, so that's cool. But one of the things that perhaps would be useful for us to do when we meet, is it next week? We had to cancel this week's meeting.
We're doing the 20.
Because too many people are away, yeah. So, is to come up with a list again of where we're at, because things that are. While it's true it's all tied together, the number of outlets, which is a specific question we need to, we could ask, is not a zoning question, I don't think. And that's what we have to sort out, because we do have to get the timing right, in terms of when's, when's a hearing that might be partially talking about that? When will we take positions on warrant articles? And where's that middle space where we can have the conversation we're talking about?
I'm not going to try to answer it now, but it does reflect back on some of the zoning related questions that have come in. And there are, there are notes from Minnie, so I think we'll pick up that thread again next week, so.
So it's, it's new and exciting and ever evolving and trying to figure that out, and carving out some time where we like have actual things, not just so, what do you think we ought to do? Some actual things people can talk about.
Are we going to limit, and what, how would we do that, and what's the right number? That's not just our, you know, our own cerebral decision.
Right, and it's something we may need to draft internally before we actually have the chance to discuss it as a group. But the clock is ticking on us as we go along on that.
Enough, so, by me.
Any other things to mention?
Did you have a report?
I do not, I've, my committees have been fairly quiet.
Can I ask you about this?
But then I'm sorry. Oh, right, oh, thank you for reminding. It's like the one big thing, it's a giant document in the middle of the packet. So in our packet, you will find, I'm sorry, thank you for mentioning that, because it's like.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't code the softball correctly.
That's quite all right. What you'll find from the Affordable Housing Trust, the Amherst Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, is their strategic plan. We worked with consultant Jen Golson to get this put together and have been kind of crafting it for a while, actually began before I even joined the trust, and so. But does articulate sort of the first steps that they're going to look to execute and, you know, the direction they're going to take in the, in the first few years. And I think it also, what's nice about this is it does, you know, one of the changes we made at Springtown Meeting was to alter the, the number. And, and in some ways, a little bit of the focus of the Affordable Housing Trust, because we subsumed the Housing and Sheltering Committee. And so there are aspects of sheltering that are now in the strategic plan as well, and so that, I think it's reflected there. And so it, you know, it's available on the website, and people should take a chance, if they get an opportunity to take a, a look through it, they should. And, and it's not terribly long as these kinds of things go. But it is, I think it'll really help the, the, the trust get moving forward on some, some actionable steps that they've been wanting to do for a while, and various pieces. And now we've got a kind of structure about how to, how to move ahead in, in a way that's, you know, functional, I guess is the best way to describe it. So that next steps are, are sort of teed up and ready to go, and. As a plan of, plan of attack, as well.
Nine members now.
Right.
So it's good timing, because.
Right, no, exactly, we, we now have just added the, the, the extra members to it. We, we had a nice group of folks that we interviewed for the purposes of, of sort of filling in the trust. And, and so we've, we've, we've got our membership up in, in a good place, and so we're, we're ready to start taking on some work. And I think that the current chair's plan is to include, include, you know, the community members as well, and some of the subcommittees that, that we're thinking of forming and doing. So, you know, inasmuch as people may not explicitly be on the trust, there are people that are interested in, in serving and may be asked to, to help us out as far as moving some of the goals ahead and, and doing some of the legwork that's necessary. There's a lot of, you know, large and complex components to some of the work that, you know, the trust can do and wants to do. And so having more people apply some, some effort to it is helpful in getting it done in a timely way.
And so associated with that, when, when John Horneck, the chair, points out, well, you know, welcoming the opportunity to discuss the plan, et cetera. So, rather than necessarily having that conversation, my personal interest as a select board member would be in ensuring that there's frequent communication associated with some of the bullet points and examples that he's provided. In terms of, for example, the social services funding. So I know you guys are working on planning out that conversation of all the different kinds of community services funding. We already do, no matter what we call it, and, and how it functions in that, and to make sure that they're aware of when we're having those conversations. So they can see what we're already doing and how this idea might fit in with that, so that they're prepared to do that. Because obviously, we have a lot on our plate for September, but, but to make sure that they're part of that conversation, rather than just depending on them to notice or through you. But to like somehow, this, this is a good example, I think, of officially, of we have to figure out a way, as you guys sort out how we're doing that particular thing. To let all the committees and boards know that we're going to be doing that event, and so that they have some opportunity to prepare for it as a committee.
And one other note, they, the Amherst Municipal Affordable Housing Trust will be meeting this Thursday evening, I believe, is the next scheduled meeting, so. Yes.
It was a little, I like John, Mr. Horneck's letter, but when he says, it would be useful to discuss the relationship between the select board and the trust. Well, I mean, I think we know what the relationship is, maybe to discuss, you know, channels of communication, or what Ms. Brewer was just talking about. I think the relationship is, the structure of that is known.
Right, I think that's probably what his intent was there as well, but. I'll. I can ask him about it, absolutely, I will. Some confusion about that. So I think that was the, I'm trying to think if there was anything else now, we haven't had this conversation in a while. I think that's it.
PBTA?
That reminds me, yes.
He knows so much about PBTA, I figure there's something that's an update.
I go to 9,000 meetings, and then I have like a week off, and suddenly, I forget, everything that happened. Anything that happened previous to that week off was gone now. Actually, we received, at least I received an email, I want to say yesterday, no, Friday. Because yesterday was Sunday, and I know they didn't send me an email on Sunday. On Friday, of the, of the, you know, the voted changes that are going to occur, and, and there's a sort of laundry list of, of what's specifically taking shape in our town. Not that it's changed since the last time we discussed all of them, but I think they sort of put them in a formal thing. I need to convey that to the manager and get that posted on our website for, you know, sort of public awareness of what those changes are. To the service, most of the ones for us will take effect basically after the Labor Day weekend, because that's when UMass is back in session. So the effective change date is really the 4th of September, 5th of September, for the changes for us. Some of the ones that are happening in Springfield and that area happen about a week earlier. And, but thank you for that reminder, we have a meeting Wednesday of this week, where we'll probably. Go over that all again, one more time, and review anything else that's changed with regard to sort of budget projections and that sort of thing, relative to, to those cuts. And whether or not we're actually making up the gap that we needed to make up or not, we'll, I'll have more news on that. At next, our next meeting on the 30th. But that's, that is the sort of latest news of the, of the PBTA. But the, let's see, the MPO is meeting tomorrow to make some small tweaks to their budget for the coming year. And, you know, so anytime they, the way they work is they have a, a five-year plan that they're, a capital plan that they're working on, and then they have the current year that they're in. And in either circumstance, if they make changes to it, they have to put it out for public comment for a period of time. Let's say we've shortened it to 21 days, but, so we met last month to put things out for public comment, and now this, we can take action on it this, this week on Tuesday. So we'll probably take action on those changes. And most of those kind of changes are, you know, not terribly controversial in some respects, the, you know, changes in costs and, and, you know, they either. You know, if things go up, then we have to move money around to sort of make sure to cover the project, and let it, you know, make sure it gets finished. And likewise, if, if a project comes in under budget, then that frees up money that's available for other projects and can be applied perhaps sooner, or start a project sooner as a result, and that sort of thing. So, you know, I think it's sort of the typical mid-year type of changes are happening with regard to the, the MPO, which is municipal planning organization, relative to, essentially relative to, you know. Money's available from Mast out in the federal government, et cetera, for roads and bridges and railway infrastructure, particularly related to transportation. So again, no more next week, after the meeting tomorrow. The AGCOM hasn't met, trying to think if there's any other. What I should do is look at the back of our sheet, see what things on liaison four, if it strikes any reminders. No real news from this Amherst Center Recreation Working Group. We've, we've offered suggestions to, to staff regarding some sample companies that might, you know, there was some money granted for a master planning process. We had, at our last meeting, sort of gone through and seen a few of samples of work from, from some of those companies that are, potentially would be able to do that kind of master planning work for us. And then we sort of put our votes in as to who we liked of the ones that we had, but we haven't met again to sort of take any action on, on where that's going. I'm going to go through the list here, anything else? I don't think so. So I think that's largely it for me. Thank you for the reminders, because again, it's been a month since some of the things have met. Also, out of practice, been sort of buried in, in evaluation mostly over the last couple of weeks, so.
Yes. Strange time of year, yeah.
Doesn't exist if it isn't that. So thank you. So I think if there aren't others from, other things from you guys or questions for me around those topics, then we'll let the manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I don't, not sure what Mr. Zomack reported on last week, but I'll just go through, and if he's, he's already covered it, you can say something. So in the, in the spirit of thanking the university for things nicely done, I did send a letter to the chancellor thanking him for the work that they did on 4th of July, Independence Day. They devote a lot of resources to have, making sure that that's a community-wide event, that with their police, their public works, the planning, they, the use of the facility. So they do a really tremendous job. And I, when I was just seeing how much they put into it, and how much our LSSE staff works with them, how closely they work. I was really appreciative of that, and so I want him to know that explicitly. Coffee with Town Manager, their next event will be this Friday, August 25th, I'll be with Fire Chief Nelson at Kelly's Restaurant. So if you want to come, we're expanding our hours, because I think Kelly's sometimes attracts an earlier crew, so we're starting at seven, we'll be there from seven till nine. We did a couple of team building things this August, it's a good time for us to group together with the school department, it's a brainchild of the interim superintendent. We had a, the school staff and town staff get together for pizza and sort of some games, but mostly tried to force everybody to sit with somebody they didn't know from the other side. And, and had conversations, and people had, people introduced each other, just to sort of build that camaraderie between, that we're one community, even though we may work for the schools, or we may work for the town. And that, I think that is pretty low-key, but I think it was pretty successful, and thanked the superintendent for thinking of that idea and helping to push it forward. Likewise, I've held a, department heads invited them to an after-work event at my house, and so just to have people come together and sort of talk about anything but work. And so that was, that was a nice little event, too, and I appreciate all the people coming after work to participate in that. This year, this is the time of year when we start to prepare for the students to come back, and so the police have been working with the university in preparation for all the normal things that they anticipate. And trying to be aggressive and proactive in communicating with students, especially freshmen, when they come in and letting them know, you know, how it, how things work, what the ground rules are, educating them about things. I know the CCC has worked a lot on this issue, and we had some conversations about their efforts, too. One of the things that they're paying special attention to with all three of our institutional partners are when students come back anticipating potential activity that may stem from the recent protests and counter protests that have been happening throughout the country. Being in communication with the public safety officials in, on the campuses, what kind of support can we provide, what do they expect, what, what do we expect them to do? So they're having those conversations now, which I think is a very, that's just good management and paying attention to things. On the fire side, we, our three new firefighters are working out really, really well, we appreciate their coming to the town, each coming from a different perspective. One is in the academy and about to finish up, the other two have gone through the required training, so they're actively involved as being firefighter paramedics. Later in the year, they will both go to the academy, so, you know, paying attention, we're putting a lot of investment into these three individuals to become valued members of the fire force, so that's, that'll be, that's really good. We're paying special attention to the payroll for the fire department, there's been a lot of changes, there's, there's been some injuries. So it's something we're hyper alert to, even though we're only a couple of months into the fiscal year, it's something the chief will have to be paying attention to, so we don't go over budget. The student force members arrive on Sunday, and they go, undergo an intensive week of training. There are 32 student firefighters who have signed up, which is what we want, that's exactly the right number. Ten are new, which is really a good recruiting year, uh, that, and six will actually live in the North Amherst Fire Station, which is the goal. And those are all the senior leaders of it. So that's, that's coming, working out. And then on the fireside, they're also ramping up, uh, for the, um, return of the students. That we will be staffed up on the first weekend when they return because it's a long, they come in on September first, but their classes don't start until the fourth. Uh, we're anticipating a fair amount of activity, especially with freshmen being there early. So we're prepared for that. And then, of course, we continue with the, um, additional staffing that UMass provides, uh, through their funding. Uh, on the DPW front, the roundabout, um, project is going really well still. You know, it goes fast and then it seems to slow down. Verizon finally is down there. They're taking a lot of time to remove their poles. They have to switch everyone over, but they're, they're actively working on it, so that is, um, good. We have three sets of crews, um, working in the same area, so that it's, it's wise for us to keep the, the intersection closed so that they can work as quickly as possible. Uh, and even with that, they're sometimes stumbling over each other. They all seem to want to work in the same spot at the same time. And because we have our crews putting up, uh, streetlights, we have the Verizon crew changing over. And then we have the Warner Brothers who are still doing the sidewalks and structures and things like that. They anticipate, they don't anticipate paving until August thirty-first, which is our deadline, but it's at the tail end of the deadlines. So, but they believe they will be able to pave on the final coat. It's already been paved twice, the final coat on August thirty-first, which is a week from Thursday. Students are scheduled to come back the next day. Um, we've already anticipated that, um, the, the, um, issues with the intersection because our schools, the Amherst schools, open on the, on Wednesday. So we will be making accommodations and working with the bus coordinator at the schools to make sure buses can get through the intersection or open it or keep it open early in the morning and then close it after the school starts. So that's, that's being contemplated as well. Uh, you also see if you travel North Pleasant Street, they, um, we're paving today. They have two more days of paving, uh, and then they'll be off of North Pleasant Street. And then they, the only thing that'll be left will be, be the painting of North Pleasant Street. And that is moving along. That will be followed up by paving East Pleasant Street, uh, which won't happen until, um, uh, September at some point. That will probably be, probably be the last major paving project for the town this, this year. Uh, UMass, uh, is working on the crosswalks that you gave them permission to install a few weeks ago. So they're hoping to get that completed prior to, um, school opening. And then as you see, the work in Amherst Woods, uh, continues with, that's a.
And continues.
And continues. It's a major project. I was, I just received sort of the, the history lesson of how, why sewer wasn't put in there, why, you know, things like that. It's just kind of an interesting, why we're paying for it now. We had talked about College Street being paved, um, but that's not going to happen this calendar year. It'll be put off till the spring and that's, that's actually a good. Contractors, um, every single contractor is being absorbed by the state working on ninety-one. There are major construction projects in Springfield, in Northampton and in Greenfield. Uh, we know people, you know, who are saying they're, they're, work for one company and they're being farmed out to subcontract for other companies because everything's, all the resources, I think that's part of the reason where we, you know, our paving is going to happen till August thirty-one because the state is really absorbing a lot of that. Let's see. The, um, as we talked about, I think you are aware, we talked maybe a little bit about this, this, um, building inspector, the building commissioner had, went to the bid forum and that was really well. And then we went the next day, I think after our select board meeting, we went to the Chamber of Commerce meeting and then pretty much the same kind of thing. There's some overlap, so there wasn't anything new for a lot of folks. But again, uh, it, they had bigger things on their minds for that meeting because they were dealing with the vacancy. And so we sort of got in and get out and did our thing. They're, but they're appreciative of it.
Yes.
For the viewers, about signs?
Yes.
You, you didn't say what it was.
Oh, oh, the, the new, the, uh, okay, so signs shorthand for us, we all know it, but the people who are watching may not. So the building commissioner is looking at, um, beginning to address the issue of signs. Uh, the way he presents it is that this is not a health and safety issue. They've pretty much organized themselves on those things already. So now they have the capacity to take on the proliferation of signs, starting with the sort of signs that you put, see in the public way that might say, there sometimes are signs, LSSE signs, looking for football tryouts or whatever. Letting people know that we're going to keep those out of the public way. And, uh, so you can have them still on your own private property, but they can't be in the public way. And then looking at the most egregious examples and educating business owners about covering of windows, signage that isn't appropriate or permitted. And, uh, I think he described a little bit about what he was doing when he was here about the, the sort of approach, the sort of gradual approach where we start to ratchet down and then revisit things. And also at the same time, where we're looking at the sign bylaws, which are both general bylaws and zoning bylaws, um, to see what can be changed. Unlikely for the fall town meeting, but most likely for the spring town meeting. So that, um, there's just, you know, our signs are, um, it, it, you want to bring regularity so that everybody's treated fairly. And that's where we're trying to get to. And it seems like sometimes that's not really happening. So the building commissioner is really intent on trying to get that. And I think this is really, you know, as you mentioned at the bid forum, Ms. Krueger, that it has been a, a select board initiative to make this happen and to say, we need this paid attention to and that's why he's doing that. Mr. Slaughter mentioned the pay contract. That's, we're meeting again on the twenty-fourth. That makes, we're making really good progress on that. I think, um, we're starting to agree on ma- major issues and we still have a lot of language things we need to talk about. But, um, I'm very hopeful that we won't need another extension before, between, beyond September thirtieth, uh, to make forward progress on that. Importantly, Beacon Communities did not receive an award of tax credits from the, from the state. They are examining their options. When I spoke with the, with Jay Ash, the secretary, he basically said it's not unusual not to be funded your first time. In fact, it's unusual, it's unusual to be funded the first try. Beacon is very practiced at this. They have a very high quality, they're a high-quality developer with a high-quality project. They have a supportive town that has invested funds in it. It's, it's the type of, it's in the location that the town has designated some, this pro, this type of project to happen. And it's addressing an affordable housing need that we have designated, which is housing that for, with deep affordability. So it has a lot of things going for it. And, but we are, they are examining, we'll be communicating with, um, with the state to say, how can we make this better? We are intent on, uh, seeking this, going back at it again because I think it's, it's, the town is already in the select board and the community has already said in many ways, this is a quality project that should happen and this is the right place for it. So that will, I'll keep you updated on where that goes. I have not had, I have not had a conversation with Beacon, but David had, Mr. Zomack has. And so, um, they're examining their options right now.
Mr. Buckman, if I could just add, if people might not know, when you say it's not uncommon for, um, a developer to have to apply a second or a third time for tax credits, the reason is not always a deficiency in the proposal, but rather a lack of resources. So we have more applicants for low-income housing tax credits. They're a federal resource that each state, in this case, the state is giving out competitively. So if people are queued up, um, for asks and there's not enough resource, then that, that's why it kind of cascades down to a second and third. So it doesn't, I mean, it, it, it's not just, there's something wrong with that project, but they're queuing up, waiting for enough resource.
Right. That's good, thank you. The DPW Fire Station Advisory Committee met last week. I don't have an update on what they, uh, are looking for. They've established the land parameters. When I talked to the chair before I went on vacation, she was more intent on thinking, we're not interested in asking for funds at the fall town meeting. She felt there was some education that needed. I'm not sure what happened if that, what transpired at the committee meeting. So, um, that was her speaking individually. Whether the committee agrees with that, I'm not sure, but I'll keep you updated once we know more about that. We'll be bringing a, a more, a fairly formal propos, um, presentation to you about the Health Insurance Trust because that's a major issue for the town. And, uh, the comptroller and I will be working along with the people, the people who manage the trust to, um, make a, um, formal presentation to you so you can see exactly what is happening with that. Speaking earlier about the.
If I may just, when do you anticipate that?
I think we might, did I put, did we put it on? We penciled that in for September eleventh. So we'll talk about that agenda setting if that's appropriate. I mean, Ms. Brewer brought up about the charter commission. I've been asked to, uh, do a comparative analysis of the cost of town meeting versus a cost of a council form of government. So we'll pull something together on that, um, best we can.
How do you do that?
I just, I can only look at our staff resources that we devote and what we can anticipate. It'll be a guesstimate and people can pick at it and, but we'll try to be transparent so people can say, well, that's not really accurate. I mean, we do know, I look at town meeting, we know, do know what staff resources it takes to attend certain number of these meetings. We do know staff resources, uh, just.
Packs.
Just have to try to look at that. I think, I'm not sure if I reported this on, that I attended the Council on Aging and Long Range Planning Committee meeting on July thirty-first. And that was a real focused meeting on the need for a new senior center, which I'm sure you have heard before. But, um, it was good for me to hear the full presentation that they have and the strength of their appeal. You know, I made it very clear that, um, there are a lot of other priorities in the community, um, and this is an important one. But also looked at, are there other ways to address it? Can you, we work with another community to, um, to address it. So, um, but it was good, they were appreciative of the conversation and I think they, they have, um, this is a fairly, it looked like a pro, uh, updated presentation from several years ago. I'm happy to report that I renewed the contracts with both the police chief and fire chief for three years. Where I feel like we're very lucky to have two dedicated, experienced professionals leading our public safety efforts. And I want to thank them for, uh, going through the negotiations. Pretty standard, um, cost of living increases for, for them. And, um, so, uh, I'll get more details on that. They signed them while, while I was away on vacation, actually, if they had it in front of them. We have been looking for the, if you recall, the town meeting approved, and you did too, the shared procurement officer position. So we've interviewed people. We have some really excellent candidates for that and that's, um, so we'll be making that decision very soon. And, uh, very, really superior candidates. And, um, and what's, a side note to this is that sometimes you get a really good candidate who's not qualified for the job, but you say, wow, this person would be great if we have another opening for something else. They're not quite at the level we need, but you get, you alert, you get alerted. And also internal candidates, it's really good for internal candidates who say, I'm interested in, as you see the ambition that's being generated. So going through this process, I think it has been really, uh, it energizes people in some way. It also opens our eyes to what, what the possibilities are. And, uh, I think as you said, that, that people do want to work for the town of Amherst. It's really, it's an exciting place to be. I appreciate Mr. Slaughter, um, coming to Mrs., uh, Linda Chalfant's, uh, retirement. And, uh, that was a really well-attended event and thanks to folks who organized that. She was, Linda had some really genuinely warm, wonderful things to say about her, her experience in working with the town. Uh, she, she's a very generous, warm person. You can, you just see that in, um, it was, it was a really, really sweet event and, um, she had a lot of family there. And it was a, it was a, it was a hard day. I think it was a Friday before, I forget what the day it was, it was a Friday and it was, but it, but people really made the effort to be there. And a lot of people spoke, was it, some people not even expecting to, so they wanted to. And another note along those same lines is Jonathan Tucker's last day was last week. He's made an enormous contribution to the town with incredible knowledge. He's, that really dedicated his professional career to the town. We, there will be a farewell event held for him later, after Labor Day. And just, I think, everybody's sort of, there's, as we know, there's just a lot of people on vacation at this time of year. So, oh, and then, um, I think we all, I sent out earlier, Congressman McGovern will be on August twenty-third. At nine-thirty, we'll be at Simple Guest Farm on ten eighty-nine North Pleasant Street. So if anybody can attend that, I think, um, Ms. Brewer had a good idea that it was a valuable thing to do, to attend when, if he's making the effort to come here. And because, um, when you look at the schedule, he's going to like twelve places that day. We're at the beginning of the schedule, that means we're, we're likely to be on time for that. So, hoping folks will be there. And, uh, on August twenty-ninth, at seven-thirty is the UMass Community Breakfast. Later that day is the First Day Celebration on the Common. August thirtieth is the International Student Reception at four P.M. So those are all the things. At your next meeting, the thirtieth, we'll talk about this agenda setting, but it looks like we're sort of lining up a lot of sort of parking things like, um, Fisher Street Resident Request, Olympia Place Parking, Downtown Parking Group. There's a mo, poll hearings for putting these mobile light antennas on some of the polls. So it'll be a, that's going to be that kind of night with that type of thing on the agenda. And I think that concludes my report. If you have questions, I'm available.
You talked about, um, people really wanting to come and work for the town of Amherst. And if I'm right, I think tomorrow is your one-year anniversary.
It is, yes. Which I'm very pleased to be here.
So, congratulations.
Survived the year.
Survived the year in, in grace and good humor, so. Did it go by fast or slow?
It seems, it doesn't seem like a year, but it's, but so much has transpired. It's really remarkable. That's, I mean, I appreciate the opportunity. It's really, I mean, we, I talked a lot about this on vacation. That's changed my life, it changed my family's life, so, and so it's been really positive experience all around. And, um, so, I want, and also you're a good board. I mean, you work well together. You're experienced, you know the town, and that helps so much to have a functioning board. I know a lot of managers, my colleagues who get in where the, the board is dysfunctional and it makes their life, they get positioned between people. It becomes really difficult. This is, you had, you have strong leadership, um, for the town and, um, and without that direction, I think my time here would have been much, I would have struggled a lot more. But you've laid out a lot of, give me a lot of the background on what the, where the, you know, problems are and stuff. So that's, that's always, that was, that's worked really well. You know, I always say it's the staff, you know, and that's, that's, they're, they're clearly, um, great to work with. But it's just, for me, it just hit it, I just honestly, it just hit at the right time in my life. It's, it's hitting on all the notes that I feel, that I care about. It's a community I care about. It's, the community is addressing issues I care about. So it's just, I just really appreciate the opportunity.
Would have been such a nice segue into our executive segment, except.
We've got something else.
Sorry.
That's okay.
But, um, so associated with the, one of my favorite topics clearly, the signage issue with the building commissioner. So one of the press reports indicated that he was going to be looking for a letter from the select board to share with business owners. That wasn't exactly how I remembered the conversation, but that was a press report that was given out. And so what I'm not necessarily quoting, our friends in the press, but what I'm trying to get at is a couple of things. When, one of the articles also mentioned that, you know, if you don't have a permit, then you can't have a sign in these various places in the public way, for example. No one has had a permit for over ten years. It isn't like there's a question as to whether or not this group has a permit or that one doesn't. No one has had a permit for over ten years. That's a different thing. We're talking about in the public way, not the, not the advertisements in a public way that are like on the sidewalk that are sandwich boards that are certain people are allowed to have because they don't have the kind of frontage that other people have. So we're talking about the LSSE signs. We keep picking on football program, which is an awesome program, but the football signs aren't supposed to be in certain places just like the Big Brothers Big Sisters Craft Fair signs aren't supposed to be in certain places. So no one has had that permit for over ten years. So it's not like that's really a concept, except something that needs to be changed. And as you indicated, you know, we thought, we flirted for a minute about doing it this spring. We realized it was tied to too many other things. It'll probably happen next spring. But I just want to make it clear that it's not that some people get them and some people don't, it's that we don't do it. And that's just how it is. And, and it sounds like we probably don't want to either, and so we will need to formalize that. My other concern is along the lines of, I appreciate that he's gone and talked to. My other concern is along the lines of, "I appreciate that he's gone and talked to the bid and the chamber, and I appreciate that you are our employee and he's not." I'm still really uneasy about the way it's been described, both at the select board and in the press, about, you know, "We're going to talk about, you know, maybe bringing it back a little bit, or we're going to talk about doing a little bit of this, or doing a little bit of that." I'm not conf-- I'm having a hard time understanding why there isn't more of a laid-out proposal that we could understand, because this is a big thing that a lot of us have been talking about for a long time. It isn't just one of the thousands of things that staff do on a day-to-day basis, because we don't get engaged in that, and rightfully so, because they're the experts, and he's still the expert on this, too. But as he himself has described to us, you know, "You don't go into a community and suddenly just change things," right? And we have had missteps associated with new inspection officers with various things, because there's the way we do it, there's the way the books say to do it, and there's the way that person does it. And I'm concerned, I remain concerned, that we haven't seen a plan of how this works beyond, "We're going to talk to people, and we're going to do it." Because what I've been asking for all along is that people be at the table to discuss this, that they aren't told, "We're going to start doing this, so you better get in line." It's that, what is a reasonable amount? Our bylaw says this. We're not going to change the bylaw right now. We're going to talk about enforcement right now. I'm not going to come and start writing everybody tickets, the effectiveness of tickets. But what would be the right thing? And I would want the business owners to be part of that conversation. What I guess I'm trying to make is, I'm trying to not say this at every single meeting, because I feel like I've now said it numerous times, but I'm also getting to the point where I'm getting ready to wash my hands of it and say, "Whatever he does at this point, I don't want it to come back on the select board as it was our idea." If we don't get more buy-in to the process, either it's a cooperative thing, or it's his thing on his own with you, in which case, I'm not going to go around defending to business owners why we're doing what we're doing. And so, I like being in the position that we are traditionally in of all working on the same team, and I'm not really feeling it on this particular issue. So, I'd just like us to be thoughtful about that, and so that we don't end up in a position with any of these issues like we did with a previous town manager, but with the same, the rest of the process, that involved coming down on a particular business for not doing a particular thing we all knew they weren't doing. And so, I don't want that to happen with anyone in here. And so, I understand that there's a line in there someplace as to, "We're not in people's day-to-day workplace." But at the same time, this is a big enough issue that I feel like we have fought so hard to overcome. The Amherst is not picky for the sake of being picky. We aren't difficult to work with because we like making people's lives miserable. It's because we think, like you say, we've dealt with the health and safety things. We think we're doing the right thing.
Quality of life.
It's quality of life, right? And it's not to punish anybody. It's to say, "Come on. We have to work together to make this better."
So, I think, if you heard his presentation to the business community, you would have understood-- he would have-- it was more detailed. He had worked on it more since he presented to you. He presented to you, based on your feedback, he understood it had to be more detailed to the business community. He doesn't say this is a select board initiative. That was volunteered. That was volunteered, and--
What made-- someone asked, Mr. Brewer, "What made you decide to take this up now?" And he didn't point the finger, and I was like--
Yeah.
"Because we asked him to."
But he does-- there is a plan, and I think-- I thought I sent the PowerPoint to you, but maybe I didn't. I should. If I didn't, I apologize, because it has more detail in it, in terms of what he's presenting to the public, which includes going out initially, having a general meeting with the business community that everybody will be invited to, and say, "Here's what we're talking about." Going out one-to-one, having conversations. So, it becomes a conversation for the first few months, that's the way. And then, come October, there isn't like, now we started forcing. It's more coming back here and saying, "Here's where we are. Here's what we've discovered. Here's how we're looking at things." And that's-- we've looked at October as sort of a check-in time for that, and that's on his-- I'll send the PowerPoint, because that's on his chart that he gives out to people. Because he knows-- he knows that he can't come in, except for the signs in the public way. That's one where he says, "That's cut and dried." You know, it's pretty easy. Everything else, you know, he doesn't know if 10 percent-- and there's lots of questions on how you measure. Business owners had questions. If you were looking at my subway shop, are you looking at just the windows? Do you go up to the roof line? How far do you count 10% of what? And he has his interpretation of that, but he says, "I'm open to listening to businesses tell me I should interpret it a different way," because it is something that he wants to make work, but sort of what you've been saying is reel it in a little bit. You know, they're-- he's like the sort of wagging, you know, sign that's inflatable things.
Those banner things.
That's clearly beyond. And he says, "We have taken down many of those." That's, you know, they've already been active. They have not-- when they've seen something in the day-to-day travels, they sometimes will address it, if it's especially egregious. What he's saying is they want to have a little more thoughtful approach with all the inspectors on the same page, so everybody's addressing it the same way, and they have a proactive outreach to the individual businesses to say, "Here's what we're looking at. Here's where-- if we were to look at it exactly the way the bylaw says, 'This is what you'd have to do,' what's reasonable from your point of view?" Type of thing. So, there is-- it is an iterative process, so I'll send out that PowerPoint to you.
And knowing that we'll receive some sort of check-in in October.
Yeah, that gives me comfort.
And also, from the standpoint that I just didn't want to make it seem like we said, "By golly, this is what we want you to do." And then, it's like, "Wait, wait, wait."
You can't just do that. Understood, yeah.
We didn't mean to have it turned out that way. Okay.
And he's not even prepared to-- the sandwich boards in town, that's a, you know, every new business that starts does get permitted according to the existing bylaw.
Right.
So, that he can attest to, because that's-- he follows that. They're pretty judicious about that. But there's a lot of other things out there, and sort of taking on what you can manage is what his mantra is.
Other questions for managers regarding things he brought up? Okay. So, now, I think we're ready to go into, given that we've sort of formally adopted the summary.
I have a question.
Sure.
I don't-- and it's possible that this is a cut-and-paste error from time past that I should have dealt with prior, but I believe that when we do have the executive session motion, it's inaccurate to say "open meeting." It should say "open session" in small letters. That's the actual motion.
Session.
Yep.
Call it "open meeting," call it "open session."
Right.
Other than that, it's got all the good details, so.
Right. So, I think I will read this. It will be a roll-call vote to do this. "So, I move to enter into executive session in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21, Part A, Subset 2, to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Manager Paul Valkman, with the intent not to reconvene in open session at the conclusion." Is there a second?
Second.
Whichever.
All right. So, it's a roll-call vote. Slaughter says aye.
Brewer aye.
Brewer aye.
And Steinberg and Wald are not here. So, for our friends at Amherst Media, thank you very much this evening, and we're adjourned for the evening in our open session, which it's 8:12, 8:13. We'll convene in our--
12.
12.
And our next regular meeting is Wednesday, the 30th.
Yes, our next meeting is on Wednesday night, August 30th. It will be a fairly full agenda. Parking will be one of the many topics we get onto, but it's not our usual Monday night, so if you're looking for us on Monday night, the 28th, we will not be there. But we will be here on the 30th. So, thank you again, Amherst Media.